Meeting called to order. Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Chapman.
Here.
Councilmember Clayton?
Be gone.
Councilmember Clayton?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Here.
Mayor Moore?
Here.
Please stand for a silent prayer, a moment of reflection. We will now salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common. As to comply with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 PL 1975, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press, the Coaster, and the Star Ledger on January 3, 2023, and posted on the bulletin board the same date. All notices are on file with the city clerk. We are on to special events applications.
First application before you is from, actually, the City Movies in the Park to be held in both Sunset and Springwood Parks. Next is a request from West Side Citizens United to do a Zumba-thon fundraiser. The location is to be determined either the senior center or Springwood Park. Next is Music Mondays, which is in Springwood Park. And last is the New Jersey Reentry Corporation asking to use Springwood Park for a job fair. Are there any questions?
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Lisa.
Thanks.
We're now on to matters from City Council. Councilmember Bez Anderson?
I don't have any announcements, but I would like to say good evening to all of you and to wish you all a very safe and happy Fourth of July.
Thank you. Councilmember Chapman?
So, the city of Asbury Park is going to program some music by the Lake House Music Academy students at the food trucks at Seventh Avenue and the Boardwalk, which will run through July. Also, there is free concerts on, those will be on Friday. There's free concerts on Monday in Springwood Park, Tuesday at the Turf Club, Wednesday at the Mogo Space on the Boardwalk, Thursday at the Band Shell above Robinson's Ale House. And I hope everyone comes out to support our young and established musicians and listen to some free music.
I don't have anything. I just hope to see you, everybody else, for fireworks on July 3, and a happy Fourth of July, too.
Deputy Mayor Quinn? Mayor Moore?
Same thing. Happy Fourth of July, everybody, and everybody safe. And let's hopefully get some sun for the summer.
Thank you. Matters from the city manager?
I have nothing, Lisa.
Thank you. Matters from the city attorney?
Nothing at this time.
Thank you, Fred. We're now on to public participation. May I have a motion to open meeting to the public?
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public participation is now open. Any member of the public who wishes to speak, please use the microphone. State your name and address for the record. There would be a three-minute time limit for each speaker. Again, your name and address.
Sylvia Sylvia, Director of the Asbury Park Chamber of Commerce. I was just going to email you all, but this is actually easier. I just got off the phone with a new business owner in town. He's opening, it's ice cream and snacks with a Latin flair right next to Jalapenos on First Avenue between Memorial and Main. And he'd like to do ribbon cutting Saturday morning at 11:00. I will email you guys all that information, but I wanted to give you a little heads up in case you didn't see it. And I just wanted to point out that it seems like we've got a lot of new and very diverse culturally businesses opening where our new neck of the woods is now that the chambers moved to Main Street. And it's really nice to see that the renaissance that a lot of the community has seen is now rolling to north Main Street and west of Main Street. It's really, I think it's remarkable and it has a lot to do with all of what you guys do. So, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Hugh Giordano, 57 Argyle, Blackwood, New Jersey. How fitting is it that industry was up now and now you have a labor representative? My name is Hugh Giordano. I'm from the United Food and Commercial Workers Union. We are a national labor union. I've been in front of this council before in regards to cannabis. As you know, we're the official labor union on a national level. We represent cannabis workers from seed to sale, both medical and adult use. We are happily the official labor union here in New Jersey under the guise of the AFL-CIO. I'm just here today because we're actually doing a council tour around the state for places that have opted out. I'm here because Asbury Park has always been a leader of progressive new ideas. And I was here when you opted out, the day that you opted out. I was here for that ordinance as well. I just want to say two things. One, Asbury Park is a great place. And I'm so happy that you have taken your time on this issue. I know that you've had issues where people think they're coming into this town. I've seen the articles myself. You know, I've lived through it, been working on cannabis now for 10 years. You are going to be a great place when cannabis does come into this area. And I want you to know that the UFCW is here to help you. As the official labor union, we've helped many other towns, cities, and boroughs around the state draft their ordinance to make sure that when you do let somebody in here eventually, that they're a good person, that they're not only a good operator, but they're going to treat the residents well here in Asbury. This is a working-class area. People deserve to know that they're going to have a fair wage, fair benefits, a retirement one day. You know, so when these folks walk into you and talk to you, "Oh, we're just a small mom-and-pop shop," we know where that's going. These are big businesses, a lot of them around the country, come into neighborhoods and think that they're going to Walmart the neighborhood, and it's not going to happen that way. One of the things I would suggest when adopting an ordinance is to have a merit-based application system. Make sure that they have environmental standards. Make sure that they're going to hire people from this area. Make sure that they sign a labor peace agreement, a project labor agreement. Make sure that they're going to have good, you know, that they care about workers and what happens to them. You know, have your planning and zoning all locked in so they can't bully you around and try to get into an area where they're not supposed to be. You know, you have a tough job. I want you to know that, and I understand that. There's probably 1,000 operators calling you a day, sending you messages and letters. I know you do. Make sure that whoever you pick, they're good people. And that merit-based application system will make sure, it makes it transparent and open. I really appreciate your time. Thank you so much. We have our folks in Eaton Town tonight as well, too. So, we're all over the place. Thank you very much. You're doing a great job.
Thank you very much, and it's nice to hear something nice every now and then, especially from a union. So, I appreciate that. Do you have a business card?
I have.
Just because I want to make sure, I'd like one also. When we're ready to opt back in, that we talk to you.
Okay. All right, that's great.
Instead of like you guessing everything, like, you know, "Hey, let's not forget, we have to call these people because they were so nice to come down and talk to us and recommended some good recommendations and some good heads up and what it should be, not what it is in other towns."
That's right.
So, again, thank you very, very much.
You're welcome. Thank you so much.
And we will get in touch with you when maybe some...
We stop getting sued.
We stop getting sued and we can opt in, so.
Thank you.
No, you're welcome. And I really do appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. You're good. Have a great holiday.
Also, thank you from a taxpayer. Rena Moreno, Eighth Avenue. I just want to ask, what happened this week? We had so much excitement. People on public property, painting benches, trying to get a bocce court in a residential neighborhood. Could anybody explain what happened? Nobody seems to know who started this whole thing. And I think you better get the people to paint those benches green because they're not supposed to be noticed in a park. They're supposed to blend in with the beautiful parks we have. Other than that, I just want to ask, when was the last shade tree commission meeting? Does anybody know? That's it. I want, oh, the other thing I wanted to say. Somebody's got to be punished for digging up a private, a public, I don't know what you call it, an island? That's what you'd call it. Somebody's got to get punished, and somebody's got to get punished with those benches. They're not supposed to be painted. So, what's the answer?
Shade Tree Commission, I'm not sure when the last meeting was. We can get back to you on that.
So, they don't meet May through August, so they probably had a meeting in April, and they are supposed to meet the third Tuesday of the month. But I'll have Lisa email you with when their last meeting was.
Yeah, and just elaborate on that. We don't meet because we do greetings every single Saturday, Wednesday, and then pop-up greetings. So, most of the members who are on the commission are at the greetings as opposed to the meetings on Tuesdays.
Okay.
Do you want to answer the other two?
Yeah, so as far as the bocce court, we are going to hold the person who hired the contractor to dig up the city park responsible, and they will be getting a bill for us to restore the property back to the way it was. They will be held accountable. Regarding the benches, that was approved by the Environmental Shade Tree Committee. They did not run that by the city council, though. So, in the future, we're going to communicate with them that any projects they're doing, they just need to run by the city council because no one on council was aware of the bench painting.
I know, but are you going to repaint them?
So, that's going to be a conversation that the Environmental Shade Tree Committee will have and make a recommendation to the city council.
Okay. One more thing. The flag poles outside, the two new ones. Could you please fly the American flag on one for the Fourth of July? I appreciate that.
So, the flag poles have been here for about three years now. There are ceremonial poles. The American flag and the POW flag always fly on the tallest flag pole. And the other flag poles are for the city flag, the state flag, and other special flags.
Well, how about just for the four? Wouldn't that be nice? There's a special one up there now.
Yeah, so flag etiquette, the American flag always has to be the highest flag. So, if we were to put the American flag on a lower flag pole, it wouldn't meet flag etiquette. So, while that's a good idea, it's not appropriate.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hello. My name is Ikey Redding from Asbury Park. I have a food truck. Give me hibachi. It's been kind of hard. I'm just starting out. I started out in September, and it's kind of hard for me. It's a lot of restrictions for food trucks. And I just feel like, I just feel like I'm getting a hard, I'm getting, they're giving me a hard time. Like, I'm trying to get down by the beach. They're telling me that it's owned by Madison Marquette. It's just a whole bunch. Also, I'm going to be giving out free lunches Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays for the kids from 12 to 2:00 because I was told that Asbury Park isn't giving out lunches anymore because school is out. So, if I can get some help with that, it'll be appreciated. But I'm going to be doing that for the whole summer until school is back open. Like I said, this is my first business, and I'm new to this. But I just need a little bit of help, any kind of help. If I can get down by the beach, close to the beach, that'll be appreciated because it's like I have to be stuck on this side of the tracks. And it's like that, I don't think that's fair.
Anybody? Is that it?
Yes.
Okay. The problem with you not being able to be in the beachfront area is an agreement between the city done in 2002 and the original Asbury partners, who is the master developer. And, you know, the language says, no retail can be east of the west side of Kingsley Street. And that's a law. We can't supersede that law. We can't break that law. They agreed to it, and they're not agreeing to it.
Okay, you say that's a law?
Yeah, yes, it's a contract.
Okay. Because I was down, I went down to talk to Madison Marquette. They told me that someone else, they're running it now. And...
Talk about northeast, Madison.
Oh, the Michael Carr.
Yes, yes. So, I went down there, I spoke to Madison Marquette. They told me that another guy was running it. And I spoke with the guy, I forget his name, I spoke with him.
Michael Carr.
Yeah, Michael Carr, exactly, Michael Carr. I spoke with Michael Carr. And at first, everything was okay, but I don't know if he has a food truck or what it is. But now it's like he doesn't want me down there, and I don't understand it.
Why don't you leave Don at your name and a phone number and an email?
I have.
And we'll...
Don?
Don is the city manager. Not only that, there's other events that are always looking for food trucks. I feel like we have events like music, Mondays that looks for food trucks.
Right, so on Mondays in Springwood Park, we have...
I understand. I know about Mondays in the park, but that's this side of the, that's this side of the tracks. You know, it's a whole bunch of other people on the, what is that, what is that side called? This side, this side of the tracks.
Northeast.
North, yeah, like it's a bunch of people on the north side, too. It's like I got to be stuck on this side. That's not fair at all.
Oh, you don't have to be stuck on this side. You can go to the Grand Avenue Park, you can go to Kennedy Park, you can go to Liveberry Park, Sunset Avenue Park.
Right, but he can't be parked, though. He has to understand that, you can't.
If there's a vet goal, you can be parked until you run out of cars.
Ikey Redding.
Ikey, can you spell that, please?
I-K-E-E.
I-K-E-E and Redding?
Yes, R-E-D-D-I-N-G.
Okay, and this number it says to order, that's the number I should call?
Yes.
Okay. I'll reach out, Don.
Thank you. Seeing nobody else, motion closed?
That's it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public participation portion is now closed. Thank you. Okay, we're now on to the minutes. I have the executive and regular meeting minutes of the June 14, 2023 meeting. Do you have a motion?
Move it.
Okay, second?
Second.
Thank you. Councilmember Bez Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're now on to consent agenda resolutions. All matters listed on the consent agenda are presented collectively. All matter, all matters listed on consent agenda are presented collectively. The city council will be considered for approval with one vote. These matters are considered to be routine in nature, and there will be no individual discussion of these items. If discussion is desired by one or more council members as to any particular item, then said item shall be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Resolution 3, 2023, 338 will be removed from consent agenda and considered separately. On consent agenda tonight, we have resolutions 2023-321 through 2023-337. Councilmember Chapman will be abstaining from the Music Mondays in Springwood Park application on resolution 2023-321 approving special events. Do you have a motion to approve consent?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Onto individual resolutions. We're going to start with 2023-338, the resolution approving a liquor license with special conditions for Porta at Asbury Park LLC.
I think we're going to do that last, Lisa. Oh, I'm sorry. That's okay. Thank you.
Resolution 2023-339, a resolution approving payment of bills.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2023-340, a resolution authorizing the purchase of case management for social services.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2023-341, a resolution authorizing the purchase of two new Yamaha Viking ATVs for the Beach Department.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
No.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2023-342, a resolution authorizing the repairs to the 2018 Ford Explorer Police Interceptor Vehicle Number 10.
Move it.
Councilmember Bez Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2023-343, a resolution authorizing the replacement of two chilled water pumps at the municipal building.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2023-344, a resolution authorizing the annual renewal of vector scheduling software for the Fire Department.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2023-345, a resolution authorizing a renewal agreement with Passport Labs, Inc. for a mobile parking application.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2023-346, a resolution entering into a memorandum of agreement with the County of Monmouth for the provisions of public local health services.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2023-347, a resolution awarding a contract for professional environmental services for EPA cleanup grant.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2023-348, a resolution authorizing a professional services contract to the Rogers Group Lexipol for police training.
Move to table.
Motion, second.
Motion to table. Councilmember Bez Anderson?
To table, yes.
Councilmember Chapman to table.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2023-348 is tabled to the July 12 meeting?
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution 2023-349, a resolution authorizing a professional services contract for sewer connection fee study.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2023-350, a resolution authorizing deposit of funds for ride-share program with Easy Ride.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2023-351, a resolution approving change order number four for Memorial Drive improvements project.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2023-352, a resolution to amend resolution 2023-310, awarding contract for professional service of analysis of impediments to fair share, to fair housing choice.
Motion to table.
Second.
Second? So, motion to table 2023-352, Councilmember Bez Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Tabling to the July 12 meeting. Thank you. Resolution 2023-353, a resolution authorizing an employment agreement between the City of Asbury Park and the Deputy Chief of the Asbury Park Police Department.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2023-354, a resolution authorizing the submission of a grant application to Monmouth County Open Space Grants Program for improvements to Deal Lake.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2023-355, a resolution authorizing the submittal of a grant application for a 2023 New Jersey American Water Company Fire and EMS Grant.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-356, resolution to restate and add Roth provision for an existing deferred compensation plan.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-357, resolution of the mayor and city council of the City of Asbury Park to enter into a third amendment of a subsequent developer agreement with Khebnanians Baltic at Asbury Park Urban Renewal LLC and Khebnanians Aegean at Asbury Park Urban Renewal LLC to extend the outside approvals date in connection with the development of property located at Block 4,003, Lots 1, 2, and 16, and Block 4,003, Lots 12, 13, and 14.
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-358, resolution of the mayor and the city council of the City of Asbury Park to enter into a recognition agreement with AP Block 4,001 Lender LLC as the mezzanine lender for AP Block 4,001 Venture Urban Renewal LLC in connection with the development of property located at Block 4,001, Lots 2.01, 2.02, and 2.03.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-357, resolution of the mayor and the city council of the City of Asbury Park to enter into an estoppel and recognition agreement with AP Block 4,001 Lender LLC as the mezzanine lender for AP Block 4,001 Venture Urban Renewal LLC in connection with the development of property located at 4,001, Lots 2.01, 2.02, and 2.03.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-360, resolution of the City of Asbury Park and the County of Monmouth, the State of New Jersey, amending and restating Resolution Number 2023-248 and duly adopted May 24, 2023, and entitled supplemental resolution authorizing the issuance of one or more series of additional nonrecourse redevelopment area bonds of the City of Asbury Park in aggregate principal amount not to exceed $1,500,000 waterfront redevelopment area infrastructure project in connection with a project being undertaken in the city by Khebnanians Baltic at Asbury Park Urban Renewal LLC and has a portion of nonrecourse redevelopment area bonds of the city previously approved pursuant to a resolution duly adopted by the city council on February 20, 2013 to increase the not to exceed authorization from $1,500,000 to $2 million of additional nonrecourse redevelopment area bonds waterfront redevelopment area infrastructure project. Do you have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We are all over again. Resolution 2023-361, resolution of the City of Asbury Park and the County of Monmouth, the State of New Jersey, amending and restating Resolution Number 2023-249 and duly adopted May 24, 2023, and entitled supplemental resolution authorizing the issuance of one or more ser- one or more series of additional nonrecourse redevelopment area bonds of the City of Asbury Park in aggregate principal amount not to exceed $2 million waterfront redevelopment area infrastructure project in connection with a project being undertaken in the city by Khebnanians Aegean at Asbury Park Urban Renewal LLC and has a portion of nonrecourse redevelopment area bonds of the city previously approved pursuant to a resolution duly adopted by the city council on February 20, 2013, to increase the not to exceed authorization from $2 million to $3,500,000 of additional nonrecourse redevelopment area bonds waterfront redevelopment area infrastructure project. Do you have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-362, supplemental resolution authorizing the issuance of one or more series of additional nonrecourse redevelopment area bonds of the City of Asbury Park in aggregate principal amount not to exceed $2 million waterfront redevelopment area infrastructure project in connection with a project being undertaken in the city by Khebnanians Cove at Asbury Park Urban Renewal LLC and has a portion of nonrecourse redevelopment area bonds of the city previously approved pursuant to a resolution duly adopted by the city council on February 20, 2013. Do you have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-363, resolution of the mayor and the city council of the City of Asbury Park acting as the redevelopment entity, authorizing a temporary cellular installation on northwest portion of Block 4,306, Lot 2, in the northeast corner of Block 4,105, Lot 4, within the waterfront redevelopment area. Do you have a motion?
Move it.
I'm sorry.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-364, resolution establishing certain rules, regulations, and policies with regard to the leasing of seasonal beach lockers by the public.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-365, resolution to approve a place-to-place transfer of AP Restaurant 5 LLC Plenary Retail Distribution License Number 1303334416 Pocket License to a location of 800 Ocean Avenue, First Pavilion, Space Number 112115, Asbury Park, New Jersey.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-366, resolution authorizing proration of residential permit parking fee for those residents affected by ordinance Number 2023-12. Do you have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Fred, are we going to move on to?
I think we should just keep going with the ordinances.
Okay.
And then we could do the last item as they port a liquor license.
Okay. We're now on to ordinances for introduction. Ordinance 2023-25, bond ordinance amending and supplementing bond ordinance Number 2022-8, which provides for transportation utility improvements heretofore finally adopted by the city council of the City of Asbury Park and the County of Monmouth, the State of New Jersey on June 8, 2022, to increase the appropriation by $600,000 and to increase the authorization of bonds or notes by $600,000 with a public hearing date of July 12, 2023. Do you have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Ordinance 2023-26, ordinance of the City of Asbury Park authorizing the execution of a financial agreement with Toll Asbury Park Urban Renewal LLC and granting a tax exemption for property known as Block 3101, Lot 1, 407 Lake Avenue with a public hearing date of July 12, 2023. Do you have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
No.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Ordinance 2023-27, ordinance of the City of Asbury Park and the County of Monmouth, the State of New Jersey, providing for the special assessment of the cost of certain wastewater, stormwater, roadway, streetscape, utility, and other infrastructure improvements on Block 3103, Lot 1, within the Asbury Park waterfront redevelopment area and establishing a mechanism for payment of the cost thereof with a public hearing date of July 12, 2023. Do you have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Chapman.
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Ordinance 2023-28, ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter 17 entitled Communication Facilities Right-of-Way Permits of the Code of the City of Asbury Park with a public hearing date of July 12, 2023. Do you have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We're now on to second reading public hearing of ordinances. I have ordinance 2023-24, bond ordinance amending and supplementing bond ordinance Number 2021-36, which provides for various 2021 capital improvements heretofore finally adopted by the city council of the City of Asbury Park and the County of Monmouth, the State of New Jersey on January 26, 2022, as amended and supplemented to increase the appropriation by $165,000. Do we need to know what you don't?
Sure.
Okay.
This ordinance amends the previous bond ordinance to allow for an increase in the cost of a fire truck by $165,000.
Thank you. May I have a motion to open the public hearing on bond ordinance 2023-24?
Move to open.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Public hearing on ordinance 2023-24 is now open. If any member of the public wishes to speak, please use the microphone. State your name and address for the record.
Seeing the motion to close.
Excuse me, is this okay for the public because we?
Just on this ordinance, the public session's over.
We were not notified.
No.
We were notified that we thought it was late.
Okay. This, we're talking about an ordinance now. If you have anything to do about this ordinance, you can speak, but the public session for the meeting.
Starts at six for years now.
I haven't been around.
Okay, well, the public session's over.
I have not been around for years.
Seeing nobody else on this motion, motion to close.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Public hearing on ordinance 2023-24 is now closed. Motion to adopt ordinance 2023-24.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Thank you. We can move on to the next order. That would be the last one. Are we ready, Fred?
Yep.
Yep, go ahead. We're now on to Resolution 2023-338, resolution approving a liquor license with special conditions for Porta at Asbury Park LLC, DBA Porta for the 2023-2024 licensing year.
So, at this time, we'd like to invite any representatives of Porta to come forward and to address the mayor and city council as to why the council should renew the liquor license for Porta for the 2023-2024 licensing. And anything else you may wish to put on the record.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Raffetto. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Michael Halfacre. I'm an attorney. Live in Fairhaven, based in Fairhaven, excuse me, and I'm here on behalf of Porta. With me is Jim Watt, who is one of the owners of Porta. I would just like to indicate previously that in my experience, and I've done almost exclusively ABC work, alcohol beverage work for the past 12 years, 100% of my time. And previous to that, I was director of the ABC, and I handled, on appeal, many resolutions that impose special conditions. And just before we get into the actual conditions, I just want to indicate that this is an exhaustive list of conditions. Porta, as you know, is regionally recognized, if not, you know, mid-Atlantic recognized for its operation. Smith Group has done a phenomenal job in Asbury Park. He'll tell you, Jim will tell you that there's at least 100 employees at Porta alone, which, many of which live in Asbury Park. Mr. Watt will tell you that he's dealt with the chief of police. There's a very good relationship between the chief and Porta, and they met on the conditions that are in the resolution and have agreed to all of them. Will tell you that we've worked with the insurance council, who's present, and with Mr. Raffetto over the past four or five days to reach an accommodation on the conditions on a couple of them, and that this is a thriving Asbury Park business and that we believe these conditions, although I would consider them onerous, the owners have agreed to them, and that we believe that the resolution should be passed. Having said that, I don't know if you want to start with questions of Mr. Watt, or should I just lead Mr. Watt through a few questions before we get to the, if there's any questions from mayor and council?
Why don't we start with that?
Okay. So, Jim, why don't you just tell mayor and council who you are? I know you know them. I mean, you've been in Asbury Park for a long time, but just so we have it all on the record.
Sure. I'm Jim Watt. I live in Asbury Park, one Deal Lake Court, and I have been a practicing architect here since the mid-'90s, and I've been before you guys in the planning board probably 100 times, and have owned Porta since 2011 with my partners. As recently as last week, we met with the chief of police. We went through his conditions. We agreed to meet those conditions. He let us know that he was very happy with our general manager, Thomas, and that he was very happy with our new security company, which is Alpha Security, that the, one of the officers that was in the meeting had had an exhaustive meeting and had pop-ins and checking everybody's credentials on the security team and was very satisfied with what was happening and felt like we were doing a very good job. I've had meetings in the past with him where he's had real concerns. This was not that type of meeting. I've never said no to any of his conditions. I've never had any pushback on employing the police, adding a police car, the number of security guards that he's requesting, the purchasing of special equipment, including this time a totally new security system, which we, a camera system, which we just purchased. And he asked for a $14,000 upgrade to that system, which would allow us to store videos for longer, which I agreed to. I thought that was good for us as well as the city. And I thought the meeting, I know the meeting went very well, and I personally and my partner Kyle LaPree have a very good relationship with the police department and specifically the chief. If my general manager, Thomas, has a direct line of communication to the police department, and they speak on a weekly basis. Also, your officers are working for us every weekend. So, I feel like the police department is a partnership without, is a partner of ours. They treat us that way. We treat them that way. One of the issue that the chief and I could not resolve was this indemnification issue because we had to work with your council and our council to make that happen, and we've done that over the past four days. And I feel like we arrived at a solution that satisfies the city's needs as well as ours and indemnifying the city against any actions or wrongdoing of Porta or any of its affiliates. The owner of Alpha Security agreed to indemnify the city as well, and we agreed to the language that your council had recommended. I believe we've incorporated that language into our indemnification, meaning Porta's, and we've been given 10 days to do the same with Alpha Security, which he's agreed to do in less time than that. So, I feel very confident that we've been working, we've been working in good faith with the chief, the officers, the town in general. Again, we employ, as you know, over 100 people. I would say half of them live in town. We are Asbury, we are Asbury folks. I'm a resident. I vote here, and I love this town. I love Porta, and I'm very proud that Asbury is the flagship location of our organization.
And Jim, sorry, to get back to operations, there's a number of new conditions that were imposed this year that were not part of previous year's conditions. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And one of those conditions, or an expanded version of those conditions, are the additional cameras.
Yes.
And additional police officers?
Or? I don't know that it was additional police officers. I think there was, all of the language that was in the original, the, all of the conditions in the past have been extended into this one, and I believe the number of police officers, signage, certifications, all of that kind of stuff has been satisfied, and the chief and his staff was comfortable with that.
And Porta actually pays for those police officers that are on the job at Porta.
Correct.
Great. And that you pay the City of Asbury Park every week, every month for those officers?
I'm not sure Kyle knows, Kyle does, is their CFO, so she pays them whenever they're due.
And there's a uniformed police car there, or a marked police car?
Yeah, I'm not sure exactly when, but whenever they've asked for that, we've provided it, and if that's in, if that's in our conditions, then that's what we do.
Right. And the prior, the last year, from July 1 of 2022 to now, has there been a significant increase in calls for service as far as you know?
No, and not according to the chief. He typically prepares a list of calls for us to review with him in our meeting, and he did not do that this time. Kyle had requested that list, so I don't know exactly, but according to him, it was not, it was not an increase.
So, 2022 to 2023, it was not unusually busy as far as Porta and the Asbury Park police were as far as you know?
Not according to, not according to, that did not come up in my meeting with the chief.
Okay. And without mentioning names of other establishments, you'd mentioned briefly out in the hall that there are other establishments in town where people go before they come to Porta, and explain how that works without naming anybody, of course.
Well, we, one thing that we've really, I think, gotten on the same page with the chief about is that a good percentage, I'm not sure what the percentage is, but it's significant, of the calls and the arrests that happened at Porta are for patrons who are not patrons of ours and are not let in. So, they've been, let's call it pre-gaming, at a place that sells very inexpensive alcohol. They come to us at, let's say, 12:30 to end the night. They show signs of intoxication. We don't let them in. They get belligerent, and they get arrested. So, they've never stepped foot on, in our premises, but yet that call is recorded as a Porta call. The chief is aware of that, and we have been asked to create a log of events, which we do, which differentiate that. We've also been asked to create a log of all of our security officers every night so that if there is an incident, even if it's something that happened nine months ago, we know exactly who was on duty at that time.
And with regard to the conditions, they're new. You've agreed to reduce the size of your drinks. Is that right?
Yes. Again, I don't know if that's a new condition. I think that was the condition last year.
It's not a new condition.
But in the past, you have agreed to reduce the size of your drinks.
Yeah, exactly. We've agreed to everything.
Right.
We've never, we've never not.
I don't think you agreed to, and Jim, I appreciate you live in town. I think we all know each other, but I'm just going to dive in, Fred, just to avoid this from continuing. I don't think you agreed to insurance, right? Eric had an ask for insurance that you guys said no to. And when you guys are talking about Asbury cops, Asbury cops won't work it. We have to pull in cops from Bradley. They find your patrons so unbearable that we have trouble pulling in Asbury cops to work, the Porta detail. So, we pay Bradley. Bradley Beach pulls in cops.
My, I have a different understanding of that. That's never been told to me. That has never been communicated to me by the police. That has never been communicated to me by the police.
Are you familiar with the amounts that have been paid to Bradley Beach and Asbury Park over the past year?
I am not, but I was told that there are times when there are not available officers.
So I think the word available is the key to the discussion.
I take exception to that, I really do.
Okay.
Nobody has ever told me that. I know the police officers who work there. They enjoy working there.
That's not what we're being told.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I have never, that's never been communicated to me. We, the issue of insurance, we negotiated what we felt was a win-win situation. And I'm not going to speak for your attorney, but I was under the impression that he believes that it satisfied all of the concerns that he had regarding the issue. So we did agree to that. It just was not in the exact same language that was presented to us. But we didn't say no. We said, how about we do it like this? And he said, we retain Mr. Halfaker, the former director of the ABC, to craft an agreement that met the needs of your special counsel, who I understand is specifically, his expertise is around insurance. So that issue, I thought, as of 3:00 PM today, was satisfied.
And Jim, if I told you that between January 1, 2022, and May 31, 2023, Porta spent $141,000 on Asbury Park police officers and $14,000, literally 10% on Bradley police officers. Does that seem right to you? Roughly 10% of the time, you have Bradley officers on some?
My understanding is that it's a de minimis number of Bradley officers that are on.
And can I just jump in here for a minute? You know, you're saying that these conditions are onerous. These conditions are necessary due to the amount of lawsuits and the amount of police calls and the quality of life issues in and around the area of Porta.
To be fair, Councilwoman, I use the word onerous because I do believe they are. Mr. Watt has agreed to these conditions. So obviously, he made a decision and has agreed to these conditions. I personally, in my statement, called them onerous. I have done this, like I said, for many years. And these conditions far exceed anything I've seen in any major urban city in New Jersey. I'm not saying there aren't others.
Once again, I'm going to say they're necessary for our residents and their quality of life.
I'm not disagreeing with you. I just want to be fair that Mr. Watt did not call them onerous. I did. And he's agreed to them.
And if I may say, because I live in that area and I have to deal with 3 o'clock in the morning with patrons leaving Porta, walking through the park, waking me and my other neighbors, the garbage that is left from the cars that are parked in front of our homes, the urination, the vomit, and the defecation. I've had that in the opening of my driveway. And I had to, you know, get out and clean that the following day. So this has been a problem for quite some time.
For the month of May, six officers on Fridays and Saturdays, I think. It's all been Bradley Beach officers. Every one of them. For the weekends for the month of May. I'm looking at Kelso's report. And so it's my understanding that we're having problems getting people to work that detail. So, look, this is a conversation and hopefully something that works together. But I don't know what Kelso is telling you, but I'm telling you what we're hearing. And we're hearing that they're having problems covering the shifts at Porta.
And they very well may be. But I take great exception, great exception, to say that none of the police officers from Asbury want to work at Porta. I just don't think that's true.
Okay.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. And Councilmember, if those patrons are causing those problems and that, I'm sorry for that. I mean, I'm a resident of town. I believe in Asbury Park. I've designed over 100 buildings in Asbury Park. My whole life is Asbury Park. It really is. And I agree that these are necessary. I respect my counsel and his expertise because he's about as experienced in this arena as anybody. But I agree they're necessary. They're necessary for the town, they're necessary for us. My number one issue is to make sure that everybody who works for me and steps inside our premises is safe. That's my number one priority. That has always been my number one priority. We spend hundreds of thousands of dollars between security, security cameras, police, training. We have regular training with a former employee of the ABC. We spend hundreds of thousands of dollars to make this as a safe environment as possible. And I agree with you, they're necessary. I'm not asking to skirt any of them. I'm not asking for you to take any of them away. When we've been told that there's garbage around, we've had our security guards do a sweep around the whole block. Mr. Mayor had asked us to cut the lawn of the median across, all down Second Avenue at some point. We are open to working with the city to address all of these concerns. We employ a lot of people. We have tens of thousands of people who come through our doors and with little kids and their grandmothers and younger folks who come to dance at night. This is an important hub in terms of entertainment, in terms of hospitality, for Asbury Park. We are an internationally recognized establishment. We received an excellent rating in the New York Times. There are people who write and talk about us all the time. And I know with that comes great responsibility. And we put our money where our mouth is.
Jim, in the month of June, we've gotten three emails over the weekends that we've had to pull cops off the other streets of Asbury Park because of the disorderly and rowdy crowds outside Porta.
You know, it's very frustrating because I just met with, I met with the chief.
Very frustrating for us too. I'm not, I agree with you. We have the same frustration.
This is why I have these meetings with the chief.
Who is the chief?
I didn't hear any, none of this, none of this.
Forward you the emails, Jim.
No, no, no.
Forward you the emails that brought the officers.
Amy, I'm not disagreeing with you. But I'm saying that my liaison to the council with regarding to public safety and nuisance is the police department. We have a direct line. My manager speaks with a high-level representative from the police department weekly. They're on a first-name basis. If...
No, Rita.
I just want to...
Rita, no.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Jim, well, safety is a big issue. There's other underlying issues as well. It's the neighbors. It's the huge gatherings and big fights that happen, seeming to happen at Porta and more than any other establishment in the city.
Well, that, we employ all of these police officers, these security guards. Again, none of this was brought up in my meeting with the chief. In the past, things like this have been brought up and we've worked on them together. There were no additional conditions that he was suggesting based on a series of problems that he saw. If there were, that would be the venue in which I could figure it out. I can't, I need the chief, I need the police officers, the police department and their leadership to say, Jim, these are the problems, help us fix them. And every time Kyle and I sit down with them for hours and figure out what it is and figure out a solution. This time, nothing, zero. The issue was, how long is this storage on our new camera system? And this insurance indemnification issue, which he couldn't speak to because it's a legal issue. Everything else...
The amount of lawsuits that we're facing.
Listen, I'm not sitting here trying to state that I don't understand the reality of the situation. And I work with my counsel and your counsel to come up with an indemnification solution, which I know addresses that issue. And we weren't asked to bring our security company into this, but we did. We said, we'll have them indemnify you as well. That was not requested of us originally. We offered that up. So I am not, I'm not sitting here saying that we live in a perfect world and that there are no issues. But there are thousands and thousands of people who come through our facility. And our job is to make sure that everybody is as safe as possible. Are there issues? Yes. Are there conditions upon our license which have us go above and beyond for the betterment of ourselves, the city, and our patrons and the residents? Absolutely. But that's why we do those things. That's why we spend hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars. I mean, Mr. Halfaker just mentioned, what, $140,000 police bill for a very short period of time? This is scratching the surface of what we pay.
Okay.
We are certainly one of the biggest employers, if not the biggest employer, in that area.
And so the concerns of council, Jim, are about the crowds, for which you've agreed to the police, are about the cleanup and littering, which you've agreed to have your guards sweep?
Yes.
The area? So you believe these conditions satisfy the needs of the council and the people of Asbury Park?
That was certainly my understanding. And I didn't hear contrary from the chief. And we point-blank asked them, how are we doing this year?
So if I might, I've been communicating with the chief. So I think your last meeting was focusing on the concerns that our special counsel, insurance counsel had, Eric. And that's why you spoke about the video cameras and what that. The chief did indicate that he did talk to you about the conditions concerning them with the calls for service. And he's working actually on a list for Kyle. So I believe, maybe not this most recent meeting, but previous meetings, the chief has indicated to me that he has communicated to you all the concerns with the calls for service. I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay, let me clarify where I stand, okay? We typically, when we have this meeting with the chief, which always happens two days before this meeting.
Totally.
Which is, I don't know, I don't know how, I mean, luckily, Mr. Halfaker was available. But if he wasn't, I'm not sure what we would have done. Because we're given no time, no time to resolve this and work back and forth. All I can tell you is the chief has an open line of communication to us. Anytime he wants to meet with us, anytime he wants to sit down with us, anytime he has an issue, we sit down with him. If he wants to meet with us again, I guarantee you, he and Kyle and I will work a solution that satisfies him and satisfies us. We've been able to do it for 11 years. There's no reason to think that I wouldn't do it now. I just feel like I was given no information about any problems. I know there's, of course, there's calls, there's always, there's calls. Right? I mean, there's calls at Johnny Mac, there's calls at the Ale House, there's calls at Taka, there's calls anywhere where you have public meeting, certainly where they're serving food and beverage, there are incidents. That's just the reality of the situation. The other issue is that there's a lot of bars on the boardwalk. There's the Stone Pony, right? There's Lelo, there's all, I can't name them all, sitting in front of you, but there's probably 12 establishments on the boardwalk. There's Kim Marie's that serve, that are all in our vicinity. And every time there is an issue, the finger is pointed at Porta, every single time. And I just don't think that's fair. We are the biggest of those establishments. But I think, and I would, I say this definitively, we are by far the most professional. We spend by far the most on security and public safety. We spend by far the most on management and leadership. There's no question about it. I know this industry. I know these other places. And we are not the only place that serves alcohol within a five-block area there. Within a five-block area there that are all, that all are parking west of there and walking past Porta to get to their parking spots. And we have always, there was, we, there was a, one of the times that we were accused of littering, somebody sent pictures to me through the chief of litter in the morning after a night where the club was open. And we were supposed to have done a sweep, which we did. And I go by and it was somebody who, from a fast food, they were fast food containers that had been thrown out the window. They were blamed on us. I get it, I understand. When you're the big fish in the small pond, that's what's going to happen. But all I can say is, I'm sitting here right now willing to work with the city in whatever it takes to make sure that we do our job as good as possible.
In your mind, you have been working with the city? Through the police and through council?
And through our management on a daily basis, on a daily basis. So anyway, listen, I love you guys, you know that. I don't want to beat a dead horse. I don't want to be adversaries. I want us to be on the same team. But that's where I'm coming from. And, you know, if, when the chief has his list and sends it to Kyle, if he wants to sit down with us, I don't care if this has already happened. If he's got a problem and he's got a solution for us and we thinks it is reasonable, we'll do it.
Yeah, and Jim, I'll make sure that I'm a part of that.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, I'll make sure that I'm a part of that conversation.
And listen, I've had meetings with the chief where it has not gone well. Where he was not happy. This was not one of those meetings. That's why I'm so surprised at all this, really, to be honest with you.
Well, he's not reading the emails that are forwarded then? Because, you know, it looks sick, anyway.
Do any council members have any further questions from Mr. Watt? Any further from the licensee's perspective this time?
Oh, I hear the concerns of the council, as does Mr. Watt. And I think that the list of conditions is designed to address the concerns I've heard. There's, I haven't heard anything that's not addressed in the conditions. And now it's a matter of compliance with the conditions. And that's a team effort, and not just the Porta team, but the police department team, right? And I think Mr. Watt has more than made clear that he's willing to work with the police department and has worked with the police department. To the extent, maybe Deputy Mayor Quinn has indicated, maybe there's some communications that can be improved. All of us are involved where there's better communications that could, where in our lives, we can improve communications. So I think to the extent that we can improve communications, I'm on the ball, Mr. Raffetto's on the ball, Mr. Watt talks to the chief regularly and his manager talks to his liaison regularly. And you have Mr. Nemeth over here, he's on the ball. Honestly, I don't know what more we could do to satisfy the concerns I've heard tonight regarding the neighbors and the litter and the behavior of the crowds, so.
Okay, at this point, council has Resolution Number 2023-338, a resolution approving a liquor license with special conditions for Porta at Asbury Park LLC, doing business as Porta for the 2023-2034 licensing year. And I will offer it to the council to forward at your discretion on that resolution.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
I appreciate you being here. It's going to be a no vote for me. I would like to see, you know, once we maybe communicate, get things together. My concern is for the residents and the debris and the urination and all of that stuff. I mean, you're cleaning up around Porta, but we have to get out and clean up, you know? And so it says here in one of the agreements that the licensee in coordination with the police department shall have private security and off-duty police officers to patrol the blocks west of Porta at the end of the night as patrons move to their cars and cabs. So I would like to see that implemented. But for now, it's a no for me, sorry.
Councilmember Chapman.
So I'm going to vote yes. But just know that things need to be improved and we need to have better communication.
Councilmember Clayton.
Excuse me. I was going to vote no. I am going to vote yes because I think there seems to be some communications issues between you and the police department. And they need to be cleared up. And for that reason, I guess you've convinced me that you're willing to work and do better. And we'll see. Because there's still the option, if things don't improve, that we can appeal this or change the position that we're taking tonight.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
So I also think there's obviously a breakdown on communication because I'm getting emails about disorderly crowds. I'm getting emails, cops won't work it. So again, you're here, you're saying you're going to handle this. If not, I'm going to be calling you off the hook and sending these people who are emailing me to you. And I'm going to begrudgingly vote yes, Jim. So let's fix that communication problem. So I'm not getting these emails.
Mayor Moore.
There is a communication problem, but I don't think it's between just Jim and the police. I also believe it's between the police and us. So I mean, that has to be fixed also because you're being told one thing, we're being told a different thing. So I think this is a good time that we discuss this and everything and hopefully we move forward on this. And at this point in time, I'm a yes. But let's all work together. And again, if you're getting all jolly bollies for the police, maybe you should close up and say, hey, Donna, I'm getting all these jolly bollies, what's the council being told? Because there is a breakdown in communication. And I'm not going to blame it on you and the police. I'm going to blame it also on the police and what they're telling us. So again, that's not your fault. That's your fault in the middle. So there are problems, let's work together, let's fix them.
I completely agree with that.
I think you were very stand-up tonight. Made that perfectly clear, which I appreciate.
I have to do that. The long-term sustainability of Porta relies on that, regardless of how you guys feel. That just has to be done. And that's, we will, we've done that, we'll continue to do that.